Good evening. Welcome tonight to the May 12th Planning Commission meeting. We're going to ask Commissioner Walker to lead us in the invocation tonight, and Commissioner Stafford will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand and join us.
Heavenly Father, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. We give you our business, our community, our residence, and our city. We come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that all that we do here today is for your glory and for the service of our community. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the Planning Commission meeting of May 12th, 2022 is now called to order. We encourage you to wear your masks while indoors, and please observe six feet social distancing. When it is your turn to speak, please speak clearly into the microphone so that everyone can hear. When your name is called, if you have something that you want to talk about, please make sure you've signed up back there. And then when your name is called, please come to the podium, address your comments to the Planning Commission only, not to the audience. Any questions you ask will be answered once everyone who has signed up has spoken. We understand that there are strong feelings one way or another on many items. Out of courtesy, unless it is your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outbursts. This is a fact-finding hearing. If a previous speaker stated the points you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so that the hearing may proceed. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers will each have three minutes. Please respect the time limit. If you intend to speak, please sign up. Mr. Stoddard, will you please call the roll?
Raymond? Hobby? Janet?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Stafford?
Here.
Scott? Gerke?
Here.
Greenway?
Here.
Lamond?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Thank you. Now, may I please have a motion for approval of last month's minutes?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Mr. Stoddard, has anybody signed to speak against the consent agenda?
No, Madam Chairman, no, they have not.
All right. But first, we need to approve tonight's agenda entirely. May I have a first? May I please? Can I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. The agenda is approved. Oh, it's new stuff. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Items placed in this section are applications which demonstrate compliance with all city requirements. These items shall not involve discussion by the Planning Commission and/or the public. The consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. However, if any two commissioners so desire, the individual items may be discussed and/or voted upon as a separate matter of business. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of tonight's consent agenda with staff findings and recommendations?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Director Salmon, would you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Thank you. I will read the items, and where there are conditions, I will read those as well. The first item is the applicant is Mr. Rico Harris with Harris Architecture, representing property owner Lance Smith, seeking a one-year extension on condition number six of the large-scale development site plan review approval for construction of a multi-building commercial project on the subject property. The recommendation for this is to approve the condition along with the acknowledgement that no construction shall begin until condition number six is met because that is necessary in order to meet the requirements of Hot Springs Code, Section 16445. The second item on consent is represented by Mr. John Rogers with BNF Engineering for property owner OYC LLC. This is for preliminary subdivision plat and development plan approval for Phase Five of Wildwood Gardens subdivision. The recommendation is to approve with eight conditions. I will read the conditions into the record. All construction and construction activity is to be accomplished in strict accordance with the approved preliminary plat and development plan, these conditions of approval, and all applicable technical codes and specifications, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, full and continuous compliance with all applicable stormwater permitting and water quality regulations. Number three, the planning director shall be authorized to sign the preliminary plat listing these conditions of approval and the development plan, and work shall not proceed until the preliminary plat has been so executed. Number four, all common elements in the subdivision, if any, shall be privately owned and shall not be the maintenance responsibility of the City of Hot Springs. Number five, no permits will be issued, and the sale of lots shall not occur until a final plat meeting the requirements of Hot Springs Code, Section 16444, has been approved by the planning director and filed for record with Garland County Circuit Clerk, and an original copy of the filed plat returned to the planning department. Number six, a final subdivision bill of assurance containing a provision for the deferral of sidewalk installation to the time of individual lot development at a minimum shall be provided to and approved by the planning department prior to execution of the subdivision final plat. A copy of the recorded bill of assurance shall be returned to the planning department after recordation. Number seven, approve the request for sidewalk installation deferral until time of each individual lot development. That sounds familiar. Number eight, approval of this preliminary plat and development plan is valid until May 12th, 2024, and prior to this date, the developer may request in writing an extension of up to one year. And that concludes the items on consent.
Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Opposed? Thank you. The consent agenda items number one and two are approved. The next item on tonight's agenda is new business. I have a conflict of interest with the first item and will recuse myself. It's item number three, and Commissioner Walker will take over for me.
There would be an opportunity for the applicant and for the public to provide testimony. Director Salmon, would you introduce the item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number three is a rezon request, RZ 22099, to change zoning from R4 to C2 for split-zoned property located at approximately 1207 Albert Pike Road.
A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve and a second does not mean that you necessarily are in favor of the particular application. May I have a motion of approval of item three?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Planning Commissioners, please hold your questioning until everyone has presented. Director Salmon, would you present the staff report on item three, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, Mr. Marvin Rodriguez, seeks C2 general business district zoning for approximately two acres of land located at approximately 1207 Albert Pike Road. Subject property is currently zoned R4 medium-high density residential and C2 general business district, has a future land use plan map classification of linear commercial corridor and residential medium-high, and is located in Board of Directors District Number Three. The findings are that the future land use designation of residential medium-high does not support the requested zone change to C2. Therefore, a future land use map designation of linear commercial corridor would give the subject property a consistent future land use classification and would also be consistent with the majority of the surrounding C2 general business district zoned properties. The recommendation regarding the future land use plan map is that you recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance amending the future land use map designating the subject property linear commercial corridor. Finding with regard to the request to change zoning is that the applicant successfully demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommendation to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning. With the future land use plan map amendment to linear commercial corridor, the subject property would have a consistent land use designation and would be consistent with the majority of the surrounding C2 zoned properties for future land use designation. The recommendation is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property C2 general business district because Planning Commission has made a specific finding that the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and the change is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code per Hot Springs Code, Section 16211E. And that concludes the presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Will the applicant now please come forward and state your name and address?
My name is Cecilia, but the applicant is...
Can you just please talk into the mic?
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm nervous. My name is Cecilia, and I'm representing Marvin Rodriguez, the applicant, and we're working on this project together, but he is the one that submitted the application.
Can you please state your address? Can you please state your address?
Oh, it's gonna be 1207 Albert Pike Road.
Okay. Is there anything that you would like to add for the record?
No, everything we are requesting in there is as is. Like we explained, we want to change it to commercial the rest of it, and I think it's for the future to become doing business in there. We just want to do something little, start with something, and, you know, later on in the future, have some more business going on.
Thank you.
That's all.
We will now call those who have signed up to speak on this application. Thank you. In order to allow time for all interested persons to speak, each person has a maximum of three minutes. Please address your comments to the commission and not to the audience. Members of the commission can ask questions during the course of the discussion process. Mr. Odell Taylor, please come forward.
Yes, I'm kind of like...
Can you please state your name and address?
I'm sorry. My name is Odell Taylor. I stay in the area in which this land is being put up for communication about. I'm confused about one thing. I'm trying to get the specifics of the location because I don't know if it falls right in the area of where I'm specifically speaking from. I've been trying to search it and research it to find out the specific location. It gives a broad brush, but it doesn't give me specifics on the location.
You want me to answer that question?
Please.
Yes. Okay, it's the property that's between the tobacco store and the creek. You know where Starbucks is?
Yes.
Then there's a creek?
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a vacant skinny long lot, and then there's the tobacco store.
Yeah.
So this is the skinny long piece between the tobacco store and the creek.
Okay, so it's on the far side of the tobacco store, correct? It's not on the side or nears the restaurant? It's on the opposite side?
Do you see the tobacco store on the screen there?
Yes.
And then there's a creek towards Starbucks?
Yes.
It's the land between the creek and the tobacco store.
Okay, with that being the case, I withdraw my request to speak because I thought this land was located in a different area and a different place altogether.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Those who have signed up to speak have done so. The public hearing portion is now closed. Planning Commissioners will now discuss the project and take action. Commissioners, do you have any question?
None.
No questions here?
Oh.
None.
None.
Okay. Being that there are no questions, can I have a motion to approve item number three?
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I have a motion to approve item three. The staff report findings and recommendations is to approve. Mr. Stoddard, please call roll on the motion to approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Gerke?
Approve.
Greenway?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Keith, the recommendation to the Board of Directors is to approve item number three, changing the zoning and also changing the future land use plan map designation. That item will go to the Board of Directors on June 7th at 6:00 in this room. And Ms. Cecilia, someone will need to be here at that time to represent the project.
I'm the chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Lori, would you see if...
Yes.
Our other chairman is...
Oh, here's your question.
Okay, good. She's still here. Thanks, Lori.
I was gonna leave, but I went out the wrong door. Thank you, Vedante.
Chairman Walker, thank you. Okay, now I'm lost. Ah, we're down to item four. Okay. I am lost. Just go right to... I'm kind of confused.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Director Salmon, would you please introduce item four?
Thank you, Chairman. Item number four is initial zoning, IZ 22120. Initial zoning application for approximately 56 acres located north of Magic Springs. This is a request to be zoned C4, regional commercial, open display district. And as you know, initial zoning is zoning that is established at the time of annexation. This 56 acres is voluntarily annexed.
This 56 acres is voluntarily annexing to the city of Hot Springs.
Thank you. A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve and a second do not mean that you are necessarily in favor of a particular motion. May I have a motion for approval of item four, please?
I move to approve.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Planning Commissioners, please hold your questions until everyone has presented. Director Salmon, would you please present the staff report on item four?
Thank you. This request is seeking initial C4 zoning, regional commercial, open display, for a large undivided acreage north of Magic Springs Theme Park. The voluntary annexation petition for these properties will be considered by the Board of Directors with a permanent zoning classification recommendation from Planning Commission at a future board meeting. This acreage is located outside Hot Springs city limits. It's not zoned at this time. It has a future land use plan map designation of urban reserve. Magic Springs itself is designated tourist commercial. The subject property is vacant, and it's located adjacent to Board of Directors District Number One. Petitioners are Owens, Farrell, and Garner, and B&amp;F Engineering for owner EPR Parks LLC. The subject property is wooded, generally located from the northernmost point of Hawk Terrace and north of unimproved Hawk Terrace Extended. Existing access to the site would likely be from Hawk Terrace. A campground with combinations of cabins and recreational vehicle sites is proposed, although no specific plans are presented at this time, nor are those plans required to be presented. Neither annexation nor zoning should be interpreted as providing assurances that this land is either feasible or ready for development. Any proposed development on the subject property will likely require substantial infrastructure improvements, including but not limited to water main extensions, sewer main extensions, street improvements, and drainage improvements. Subject properties are contiguous to Hot Springs city limits to the south. The Magic Springs Theme Park is the predominant use in the area. It's adjacent immediately south of the subject property. Nearby land uses include large lot rural residential to the west, wooded lands over the Arkansas Department of Agriculture to the north and northwest, and wooded lands to the east. On May 5th, Garland County Judge Daryl Mahoney considered the annexation request and issued an order approving that request. And now the final step will be board action to accept the territory. The finding is that initial zoning to C4 does not present immediate potential negative impacts to the existing adjacent large lot residential and expanses of publicly owned forest. Adjacent and nearby properties are currently zoned C4 or are unzoned. No new uses or activity or development activities are being approved at this time with this action. Either annexation nor zoning should be interpreted as providing assurance that the land is feasible or ready for development. Hawk Terrace appears substandard, as it is a narrow, often unimproved road without curb and gutter. Improvements to Hawk Terrace likely would be a requirement for future development of the site. The desired C4 zoning is consistent with a comprehensive plan, future land use map designation of tourist commercial. Should the future land use plan map be so amended, the assignment of C4 zoning demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development per Hot Springs Code, Section 16211E1, and the standard for such as initial zoning is met. The recommendation is that Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Directors that they zone the subject property C4 regional commercial open display district and amend the future land use designation to tourist commercial, because the application demonstrates compliance with Hot Springs Code as required. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Will the applicant now please come forward and give us your name and address?
My name is Ray Owen Jr. I'm an attorney. My office is at 209 Hobson Avenue here in Hot Springs. And I represent the ownership of Magic Springs. We've been talking about this project for a couple of years now. I actually met in this same room about two years ago to talk about making sure that the utilities were gonna be okay. And you know what? They weren't, because the top part of this land is really at the limit of the pressure zone for the city water. So if this project goes forward, we will end up putting some sort of a pumping mechanism to pump it up to a tank or other storage device. The engineer with B&amp;F Engineering is here to be able to answer those questions and talk about that if you are interested in it. We kind of put it on hold for a thing called the pandemic, because it didn't seem to... The idea here is to go ahead and provide a place for people to stay in a cabin while they're... they and their family are visiting at the park. Magic Springs is a unique park in the state of Arkansas, and a lot of people like to come here. We want to be able to encourage them and to make... give them another opportunity of a place to stay and use as a base while they're here. Maybe stay a few days longer if they're gonna be out there. It will accommodate, it'll have cabins. That's the plan now. It'll accommodate those big self-propelled motor homes, as well as the kind that you can pull behind your truck, or even, we're gonna have a space for tent camping as well. It's just gonna be convenient for the people, it's gonna be good for business in Hot Springs. We will follow all the rules, and that's about it, as far as I know. If you have any questions for me, otherwise I'll turn it over to the engineer, let him answer them.
Do you have a projected timeline for the development of the project that you're talking about?
I don't have it for myself, but Jessica Hannah, the new general manager of the park, is here, and she probably can answer that question for you.
Okay.
I don't talk to the bosses, she does.
Okay, okay. Again, I'm just curious, if you don't mind responding, what the timeframe?
Jessica Hannah, 107 Ravenwood Place. We're not sure exactly on the start date yet. We think it'll take within a year and hope to start in the spring of 2023 would be our goal, if this all goes through, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Walker, do you have a question?
No question. No question.
Thank you. Commissioner Janice? I'm sorry. Commissioner Lori?
No questions.
That's last names. Commissioner Gurkey?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Freeman?
So your incentive to do this is basically to be afforded city services, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamond?
No questions.
I have a question. Are you sure that with all the housing available in Hot Springs, temporary, permanent, short-term, we really need more tourist housing?
Well, it's... I haven't done the study myself, but I can tell you that if you're driving one of those big motor homes, they're gonna... that's your... you're bringing that home in on wheels for yourself when you're there. Some people like to camp, and there'll be places for doing that with their tent or their tent campers. I mean, it's just... it just provides alternatives. I don't think these folks are gonna be spending upwards of $20 million to do this development with the idea that it isn't gonna work. I think that they've studied it, I believe, and plan on going forward with it.
Thank you.
I would like to chime in on this. I have a question for the general manager. Are you perhaps familiar with Schlitterbahn?
I am.
In New Braunfels? Is this gonna be modeled similar to that?
I'm not sure of their cabin areas, if they have that. I have been to that park, but I would guess probably so, because it's very much like a lot of parks that you see. Nashville Shores is one that it's similar to, so it would be... you know, our goal is to get them to stay on our property.
Correct.
Stay longer, come more times, and those sorts of things.
Is this gonna be geared more for like family reunions and having more entertainment options for concerts and things like that?
I... we don't necessarily plan to change our operating calendar, we just want them there. I mean, there will be, you know, tent camping, like you said, RV parks, cabins, but also larger... some larger cabins for family reunions.
Pavilion?
Pavilion, yes. And a C-store and that sort of thing. So there would be overnight security, all those things that we already do, and exactly, you know, to be able to get services onto the property and that sort of thing. We have done a study, that was in 2018, I believe, on whether or not it was... it would be useful to have that here to our guests and other people that were coming. Would you stay on our property if you came and it was a resounding yes? We would love to do that, so.
If you had expansion to services, would that be able to expand other prospects for the park itself?
I don't think necessarily to be able to use those services in the new property.
Well, to combine them to grow Magic Springs a little bit larger?
I think, yes, there's an opportunity if we are able to grow that part of the property and have that sort of thing, that it would then, you know, more guests equals more people equals more revenue equals, you know, newer product and posters and those sorts of things would absolutely be our goal for the future.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Stoddard, has anybody signed up to speak?
Just the applicant and the applicant's representative.
Okay.
And Mr. George, who's the engineer.
Mr. George, do you need to speak to us, or are you here?
Not necessarily, unless you go to the...
As backup? Okay, thank you. All right. Those who have signed up have spoken, and the public hearing portion is now closed. Planning Commission will now discuss among ourselves. I have a question. Who pays for the water, the gas, the trash, getting all that set up? The roads?
They do.
Who pays to maintain it?
They do. Unless they are dedicated to the city.
Can I ask you, do you intend to dedicate those items to the city?
I mean, it depends on what they, you know, for the utilities, you know, some of those things will be public. You'll have fire hydrants, and you'll have tanks, and there'll be some places in there that there'll be a demarcation between what the public owns and maintains and what the park owns and maintains themselves. And there'll be some, you know... we'll work through that whole process with the city staff and find where those points need to be, and something that is agreeable to everyone.
Is this something for which the city will be reimbursed?
What... could you repeat that?
Is this something that the city will... for which the city will be reimbursed?
Well, the developer will do all of this work. Everything that's done, you know, to make this happen will be on their part to take care of.
What about the maintenance?
And then the maintenance would be, you know, anything that's in the public area that's beyond their property, they can't go maintain that, but that would be the bulk of this will be on Magic Springs property.
Right.
Any improvements that are on public property become assets of the city and will be handled the way all other assets of the city are handled?
Okay.
That's right, that was the nature of my question. I mean, the sole incentive at this point is to be afforded city services, police, and firearms.
That's one of the things, yes, is initially, the preliminary concept of this uses the 55 acres that are outside of the city and also the current park parcel, and so you've got some ambiguity between who... you know, you don't want somebody in this campground to call and need police or fire, and they say, "Well, where are you at?" I mean, that clears this as one of the things to kind of really clarify that, so.
That brings one more question. Is the city equipped to provide fire and police protection for that area?
That determination has been made, and as far as I know, has been found to be adequate in terms of extending those services.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, thank you.
So, once approved, this only will take one year of completion?
I think to begin, they'll begin in 2023.
First of all, this is solely a request to decide what zone to assign to this. What they do after that zoning is assigned, and what the board does in determining the final decision on annexation. I mean, all that has to happen, and then it's in their hands. Yeah.
With the zoning, the concept of the campground is a permitted use in the C4, but the concept also demonstrates multiple cabins. Lodge is not necessarily the right word, but kind of a central building that houses different things. This development would trigger a multi-building site plan, and so a set of plans and the development would be back before the Planning Commission later on. This is just, as Director Salmon described, just for the zoning.
Anybody else? Okay. I have a motion to approve item four. The staff report findings and recommendation is to approve. Mr. Stoddard, would you please call the role on the motion to approve?
Stafford?
Approve.
Gurkey?
Approve.
Greenway?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Janet?
Approve. Thank you.
Yes, and that final determination, I believe, you probably have the final annexation hearing time and date, but this will... this is a recommendation, and we'll go to the board for a final decision. And if you'll give me a call tomorrow, I can give you that date.
I think it's June 7th, isn't it?
I'm not sure. I believe it is, but I'm not positive. But we can confirm that and get you that information.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, well. Now, Director Salmon, would you please introduce item five?
Yes, thank you. Item five is RZ 22124, a zone change request from C2 to R4 for split zoned property located at approximately 500 Terry Street.
Thank you, ma'am. A motion to approve merely gets this matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve and a second do not mean that you are necessarily in favor of this particular application. May I have a motion for approval of item five, please?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Planning Commissioners, please hold your questions like I forget to do until everything has been presented. Director Salmon, would you please present the staff report on item five?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The applicant is Mr. Ruston Duke. He is requesting R4 medium-high density residential zoning for approximately 1.35 acres of land located at approximately 500 Terry Street. The subject property is currently zoned both R4 and C2. It has a future land use classification of both linear commercial corridor and residential medium-high. It's located in Board of Directors District Number Five. I can't tell you how unusual it is to see multiple requests on split zone properties. I mean, we just never do. One that you've already acted upon was changing a split zone property from...
R4 to C2?
R4 to C2, making it all commercial. This one is taking the commercial part away and changing it to residential. So, again, very unusual, but the way that zoning was assigned way, way, way back when leaves us with properties in the city that have this situation, so you may see more of them in the future. The application says they would like to change the zoning designation from C2 to R4 in the 500 block of Terry Street, and identifies the proposed... 500 block of Terry Street and identifies the proposed use as build eight luxury duplexes. And we have a lot of new planning commissioners seated tonight, and I'm going to emphasize here that we are not looking at that specific site. We are not looking at the site plan. We are only looking at whether this request to change a split-zone property to all residential meets the requirements of Hot Springs' code. So the subject property is about 1.35 acres of land that is not platted. It has approximately 490 feet of frontage on Terry Street. The R4 residential portion is located on the western side of the parcel and has a future land use map designation of residential medium-high. The C2 business, commercial district side is on the eastern side of the parcel and has a future land use map designation of linear commercial corridor. The request seeks to resolve the split-zone issue by designating the entire parcel residential, R4. The zoning around the property on the north is general business and R4 medium-high-density residential and commercial transitional. On the east, it is residential. On the south, it is residential. And on the west, it is C2 general business district. The surrounding land use on the north is single-family residential, on the east, Hot Springs Apartments, on the south, single-family residential, and on the west, shopping center. The applicant submitted a narrative in support of this change, which suggested two findings. Number one, it responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use or other conditions. And they specifically say, as you know, a 48-unit apartment complex was built across the street. I believe rezoning this lot to all residential is compatible to that recent development. Excuse me. I also believe that rezoning this lot is also consistent with the objectives of that neighborhood. And number two suggests the small amount of land I am asking to be rezoned from commercial to residential use would not be suitable for a new business to be placed there, plus there is not business on Terry Street. The facts as presented may enable Planning Commission to find that the requested zoning change does demonstrate compatibility with surrounding development and surrounding zoning as required by Hot Springs' Code, Section 16211E. If the change to R4 is approved, the full range of R4 uses would be possible. The future land use designation on the property right now, part of it, is linear commercial corridor, and to change that designation to residential medium-high would give the subject property a consistent future land use classification as the majority of the surrounding R4 zoned property. And the recommendation with regard to future land use plan map is to recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance amending the map to residential medium-high. The zone change finding is that the applicant has successfully demonstrated that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. The Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning. With a future land use plan map amendment to residential medium-high, the subject property would have a consistent land use designation and be consistent with the majority of surrounding properties. Recommendation regarding the zoning is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property R4 medium-high-density residential because Planning Commission has made a specific finding that the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and the change is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code as required by Hot Springs' Code, Section 16211E. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Will the applicant please come forward? Sir, if you'll please give us your name and address, and if you have any information you'd like to add to the presentation, feel free to do so in five minutes.
Yes, my name is Ronald Duke, and I represent the Vista Point Properties, which my son is a primary partner in. We bought this property and proposed to build, like you said, a luxury duplexes on it, and it's, to my knowledge, there's not any business on Terry Street at all. I think this property was zoned commercial years ago when Walmart built the building now that Dirt Cheap is in. And they abandoned this property years ago and sold it to another individual that we bought it from. So we asked that you change it to residential, and we will build something that the city would be proud to have, and I think, and help the housing situation in the city. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
We'll call you in just a minute if we do. Has anybody signed up to speak on this?
Nobody.
Okay. Then in that case, Commissioner Walker, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No question, thank you.
Commissioner Davis, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Stafford?
No questions.
Commissioner Erickson?
Thank you for investing in residential or the prospect of it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lamond?
No questions.
Commissioner Freeman? Not you, Greenway. Greenway? Greenway, so sorry.
No questions.
I obviously can't read and can't remember names.
Although we have a new member named Freeman.
I'm sorry. So he's awesome.
Freeman, yes. He didn't even show up for the first meeting.
I'm so sorry. Commissioner Gurke, any questions?
Yes, I just had one. Are these duplexes a product that you've built elsewhere?
No, these are, these are different from the ones that we had previously built. These will be two-story, two, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, and they will have luxury amenities in them, if those duplexes are purposeful. They'll have granite countertops and stainless steel appliances out of the floors, and they'll be brick buildings up halfway and then siding up on the top for part of them. And they'll be placed on this property where they'll be a good-looking, you know, food complex, and also all of the landscape and everything is included in our plan with the builder, so everything will be completed in one time.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody has spoken, and now the public hearing is closed, and the Planning Commission can discuss this among ourselves. Anybody have anything to say? Commissioner Walker?
No question.
Commissioner Davis?
No, ma'am.
No questions.
Stafford? Commissioner Erickson?
No questions.
Commissioner Gurke?
No, nothing from Freeman.
What do you want your name to be now? Commissioner Lamond?
Nothing, thank you.
I need a list of new people, Kathy. I wasn't there. I can't read, it's on the curb. Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a motion to approve item five. The staff report findings and recommendation is to approve. Mr. Stoddard, would you please call the role on the motion to approve?
Gurke?
Approve.
Greenway?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Janet?
Approve.
Okay, sounds like it's approved.
This will go to the board, this will go to the board on June 7th, Craig.
Yes, this will go to the board on June 7th at 6:00, same room, and someone will need to be present to represent the project at that time.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Director's Report. Director Selman?
Yes, I have good news and I have okay news, and I have not-that-good news. Starting with the not-that-good news, we are still looking for a historic preservation planner, scarcer than hen's teeth, and the search continues.
Do you want somebody with experience, training, education?
We would like someone with experience or education, specifically in historic preservation. We sent a targeted mailing to all of the accredited planning programs in the country a week ago tomorrow. We haven't had any response yet, but hey, you know, I'm sure they're working on, on their resumes right now.
I usually know planners, I could ask if they know anybody.
Yeah. Historic preservation is something that we really need in Hot Springs. We, we try with the staff we have, but it's, it's time to have a dedicated position, so.
Yeah, I don't know anybody that can do it, but I could ask them if they know.
There's a job bank on nado.org. N-A-D-O. It is the National Association, I think, Development Organization.
Okay.
So all planners in the nation subscribe to their membership.
Tried several, that is not one we have tried, so we will. Thank you. Okay, we have next week the opening of requests for proposals on our new development code for, from consultant groups who specialize in development codes that are intended to implement the city's adopted plans. And so we're, we've had questions from a couple of very noteworthy organizations that are hoping that they follow through and do, throw their names into the ring on that. So we'll know on the 15th, I believe, how that goes. And then on the 18th, 19th, and 20th, which is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday next week, those of you who signed up for the Zooming of the National Planning Association Training and Conference, we have the room next door, the small room, reserved for those three days if you would like to come in and watch with the planners. I mean, that's pretty exciting.
What a group. It's going to be party time.
I know, I know. Settle down. So, if you don't want to do that, that's okay. There are going to be kind of a, a variety of classes that are offered at any given time, and that means that you may not want to watch what everyone else watches, so that's okay.
Do you have to go all three days?
No. And it is something that people registered for before you were on the commission.
Okay.
If you're interested, I can see if we can get you in. Are you interested?
Yes.
Okay. And we, we are looking at all three days as a commitment. It's very, much more expensive than what we usually spend.
Commissioner Janet? You got three days in a row?
Yeah.
Well, I don't have three days in a row, that's why I asked you to go all three days in a row.
Yeah, ideally, yeah.
But they frequently throughout the year have one-day classes, and they're really good.
Okay.
And those, I think, are going to be Zoomed this year.
Oh, are they?
Yes.
That's even better.
Yeah. So a great opportunity to, to do that, and we'll, as those things come up, we'll keep you informed on that.
Really helpful.
Have you, have you decided on the agenda for the items for the planning department to watch?
We haven't yet, no. Maybe tomorrow, if it slows down. It never slows down. But we'll, we'll probably do that, and we'll shoot that around to the three of you who did register for that.
Ms. Selman?
Yes.
Is the time commitment essentially eight to five, or compressed?
Nine, about nine to five, I think. Nine to 4:30, something like that.
I'm not sure about that.
Yep. So, I want to especially recognize our two surprise chairs of today. We expected Chairman Hobbie to be here. Something came up at the last minute. She could not be here. Normally, we would then go to Rick Bremick, who's our vice chair. He also was unavailable, so we went back to our previous chair.
Can't find anybody else.
Who was brilliant, I have to say, and.
I appreciate Commissioner Walker taking two roles today.
And, and then, of course, because Hillary had to recuse on one of the items, what a great opportunity to lead us, what can I say? Thank you. So it's been kind of a roller coaster of a night.
Interesting meeting.
Yeah, it was an interesting meeting. So thank you all for being here, and for those of you who are new, I hope you will come back.
I'll learn new names eventually.
We'd like to see you again.
About the time I leave, probably.
And a good opportunity for the alternates. We had a seat for everyone to, to fill in, so thanks to the alternates. And that's all I have.
Okay, with no further business to discuss, we are ready to adjourn the May 12, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.